Good evening. Welcome to our meeting this evening. Please let me show that all the council is in attendance this evening, as well as various members of our staff and CEO. Item three is approval of the agenda for this evening.
I'll move it, we approve the agenda, Councilor Smith.
Thank you.
I second it.
Question. I had inquired about our policy with regards to consideration for any level of forgiveness with regards to water and sewer. And I was under the impression I'd asked for that to be on the agenda.
You can add that to the agenda. And I think, yeah, I just, you know, I had two down as ones we submitted and they were the ones thirteen, one thirteen Q. I think I must have missed that one. I believe my mistake, but you can add that to the agenda. Thank you.
We've then seconded to approve the agenda. Any other question? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Just carry. Item four will be approval of consent agenda. So the item that the mayor fair grade has brought forward, do not affect to the agenda, please.
And that's the mayor restate that, please.
Basically, I'd like to start a discussion with regards to how we would consider any level of forgiveness for water and sewer.
Thank you, you need a second there, please.
I'll second that.
We've descended to add item thirteen, three regarding forgiveness for water and sewer bills. All those in favor of adding that to the agenda for this evening? Thank you. Item five is approval of minutes from our previous council of the whole meeting, open session, January thirtieth.
Let's make a motion to approve the C W meeting for the third day. I'll second that.
We've then seconded to approve the minutes of our council of the whole meeting from January thirtieth. Any question? Hearing that, all those in favor, raise your right hand, please. Motion is carried. Item six, approval of the minutes of our previous council of the whole meeting, open session of February twenty seventh.
Make the motion to approve the C W meeting for the third day. I'll second that.
We've then seconded to approve those minutes. Any question? Is that a question?
No.
Okay, you're just anticipating.
Yes.
Okay, I like your preparedness. Hearing no question, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. Item seven, approval of the minutes of our previous meeting, council of the whole, open session, April second.
Make a motion to approve the C W meeting, open session, April second. I'll second that.
We've then seconded to approve those minutes. Any question? Hearing that, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, motion is carried. And I think our last minute approval. Item eight, approval of minutes of previous council of the whole meeting, closed session, April second.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of previous C W meeting, open session, April second. I'll second that.
You can second this. Any question? Hearing that, all those in favor, raise your right hand.
The amusement lab now presents Danny Moore.
Thank you. Item nine, disclosure of conflict of interest, anyone this evening? We're going to move on. Most special counsel reports. Item eleven, administrative reports, beginning with our finance report with senior pumpkin.
Good evening, mayor and the council. As you can see, we are operating in a surplus in both our general and utility. Just to give you a little bit of idea of what's contributing to that so far in 2024, under general government, of course, we've received our RDC funding that Michelle had applied for last year, forty nine thousand, seven hundred dollars. Our ELG funding, most of this right now is just under the implementation piece that she had applied for, thirty two hundred dollars. Of course, our trackless sales, sixty five hundred dollars, which we talked about before, and the interest revenue that we have received above budget were three hundred dollars. Now, I will say that the RDC funding and the ELG funding is offset by some overages in our building maintenance in general government and also in our communication expenses, because those are the types of funding that we did receive from ELG. But again, still an overall surplus in general government was three thousand dollars. Protective services, our surplus is seventy seven hundred and fourteen dollars, and that surplus is coming mainly from other protective services. So that's GMO, bylaw enforcement, and animal control. Public works were in a deficit of fifty eight hundred dollars year to date. Biggest contributors to that, we had the can shaft repaired around twenty sixteen Dodge. That was sixty six hundred dollars. And on note, two were over fifty eight seventy on wages year to date. Some of that was because we started some personnel ahead of our budgeted timeframe, so we will see that catch up. And we didn't have as much time spent in water and sewer over the first quarter of the year. So of course, that puts more time into public works. Environmental health, seventy one hundred and fifty six dollars surplus so far this year. A reminder that we do have our spring cleanups coming in May, so the next quarter, hopefully have some savings there to cover that. Does remain to be seen for the first year for Brighton, our largest entity, getting their pickups back. Environmental development, twenty five hundred, twenty five thousand, seven hundred and seventy surplus. But the biggest contributor to this is we had budgeted twenty four thousand dollars as our grant to Bataguiic Developments Limited, and that has been deferred to twenty twenty five. Recreation and culture, five thousand and sixty three in a revenue surplus. The biggest contributors there on recreation, we've had higher ice rentals in twenty twenty four, which is always good. And Peckerball is picking up, so that's been a contributor to our revenue. We have fourteen thousand, five hundred in savings, and most of that is in wages. On the utility side, we, the second week here, our water and sewer bills were issued in March, and our revenue committed thirty eight hundred dollars over budget. Biggest contributor to that was just on the commercial side. We were able to gain a little bit more over what we had expected was. And we are seeing twenty thousand dollars in savings. Again, about fifteen of that is in wages, like we talked about on the general side. And the balance of that is in maintenance. We thought we'd have had a very good first quarter, hope it continues throughout the year. So our overall surpluses in general, seventeen thousand in utility, two hundred and sixty five thousand. Now, bear in mind, we put our water and sewer bills out first of the year, and all our expenses happen during the rest of the year. But given that, you'll also see that we've added our full debenture payments for the year to our our spreadsheet that we track where we are trending towards the end of the year. And our full budgeted reserve transfers for this year are ninety five thousand into our general capital reserve, thirty six thousand, seven hundred and forty seven into our general operating reserve, thirty five thousand into our utility capital, and sixteen thousand into our utility operating account. Now, to break out that ninety five thousand for capital, fifty thousand is for fire towards the purchase of a fire truck. Twenty five thousand is in public works or the replacement of equipment there. And twenty thousand is budgeted to go into our general budget, which we will need as we move into twenty twenty five and fixing the one oh five. Our contribution towards that is designated highway. For utility, it's all about saving towards a larger infrastructure project, which we will need to fund a portion of. So given all that, we are about a quarter way through our year, up to March. These results are, we are recommending that we move half of the budgeted reserves for the general fund as indicated in our budget, and the full reserves for utility. And that's a recommendation for. But that's needed, Sam. Any questions?
No questions, primary researcher. Thank you, Tina. And that's item, item eleven two for grant applications. Is that you as well?
It is.
Okay.
So in this timeframe, we've had two applications for receivable grants. One is from Corey Cross. What Corey would like to do is to have an event at the Triple C in Rockland. On May, his start date is May fifteenth, but the actual, and his end date is June four. But he's actually looking to do an all ages rock show held at the Triple C. His expenses will be eighteen hundred to twenty four hundred dollars. His revenues will be raised from ticket sales and canteen sales. Benefits to residents, Heartland residents will benefit from this event by being provided a high-end show with a major touring artist who plays at big festivals. He's saying his benefits to the community will be immediate, Heartland will be immediately on the map as a touring location for artists touring through the east coast. And Corey is asking for six hundred dollars to support this event at the Triple C. The second application that we have is actually from the Triple C. We're both riding in the same timeframe. And the Triple C is looking for four thousand dollars again this year. This was the budgeted amount last year for the Triple C. But what they're looking for is to do upgrades to their parking area. If any of you have been by the Triple C lately, you know, it is cordoned off because they can't use one of their drivers just because the ground is so soft. So they've got a quote fourteen thousand, five hundred and forty seven dollars to do this work. And they're asked, they're, they're doing fundraisers to help raise money to support this, but they've asked the town for a contribution of four thousand dollars, which we have budgeted for. And again, these are, will be brought up as a motion in the next meeting, correct?
Yeah, we should remember too, that our fun park is going to be there this summer.
That is true.
So we should have it. Not saying, yeah, but we need to remember that we're gonna, it's gonna have a high traffic, high traffic area coming this summer.
Question. In the past, when money's been available to both Triple C and to Waterwalk, was that money earmarked for operational costs or was it just for general revenue?
So it would have been, I can speak for the Triple C, and I know that it just basically ended in a general operating fund. In the past few years, they've done a lot of capital expenditures when they fixed up the hall. But this year, they definitely want to earmark those funds towards getting this driveway done because it has affected their ability to do certain things when they want to be able to do them.
Who sides through? Class from.
Marie Carden is the president.
Marie Carden?
When we did twenty twenty three budget, there was no distinction whether money is marked with capital budget.
In the twenty three budget, though, weren't we advised by the provincial government that grants to former LSD entities needed, you mainly say?
Yes, that's true.
And the usage of it was up to them.
Uses, yeah, that's what I'm saying, there was no indication of what they would spend money on, operational or kind.
And I know that in the past, they used funds from, for their generator and for tables, replacing tables and chairs and lots.
Expanding kitchen, very sorry.
Exactly.
Did they tender, low play quotes?
No, they just got one quote.
It couldn't be saving the effort, right?
That is true, too.
Those four thousand dollars that they're asking for, is that, it, it was already previously designated as a line item?
Yeah, in the budget.
Okay.
This is not an additional request. To do with Corey. Back with, they used to have the all age shows at the Triple C. They were well attended when I was younger. I think it's a great thing to see them coming back, for sure. So I think that's something we should definitely be behind because it's for all ages, it's not just for a certain group.
And that application would go under grants recreation, and we do have funding available for them.
Any other questions, Bertina, regarding the grant applications? Thank you. Item twelve is business from part of the room. Item twelve, one, that's for film made complex.
So I'll start taking the two most fundamental pillars of many project, schedule and budget. And looking at the schedule, our biggest impediment or risk to the schedule is probably just the resolution of our fire flow situation. So that's, and really, in that case, it's not so much figuring out how to do it as it is getting the chief product, which is the fire pump ordered, installed in Tom. So we've been working pretty closely with Toy Life, the vendor for the sprinkler system, to get a fire pump ordered. We've received the spec for that pump last week, the full detailed spec. That spec now has to be passed on both Andy Power, the contractor AC does electrical, and it has to be integrated into the solution through Fire Marshal's Office, be proved. That fire pump can then be secure. What we've been told is that the chassis of the fire pump and the engine of the fire pump is in stock. So there's no real waiting time, just delivery time, which is not significant coming out of new states. But the controls for that are estimated, take ten, twelve weeks from time to place the order. So that, once that's all pinned down, ordered and placed, that still should work within our timelines for mid-October opening. To be clear, just for general information, to open in mid-October, you really need to do most of the commissioning work about starting IMES during roughly a month ahead of time. So that's testing every operational system, electrical, mechanical, all the, you know, in terms of security to network, make sure it's all installed and working properly. So when we talk about opening for mid-October, what we're talking about is having our systems fully installed and ready for testing about a month ahead of that. There's not a perfect formula for this, and we don't have, because that work is not yet lined up. I think that's a good benchmark number, or a good reference number. But anyway, that's sort of the outlay of the, of the schedule. And so from a schedule perspective right now, there's nothing that I would, I would, I would report as red in keeping this open. Turning to budget, the budget is a much more challenging thing to understand where we are because the nature, a lot of the spends coming down to the wire are unknown and a little less. That's when you're seeing more, if you've seen the number of change orders from the local, you know, provider. Adding up, they all lead away every five, ten thousand dollars, it adds to the number counts. A lot of the big spends initially product, or in the project, rather, refrigeration systems, and those are known and booked, if you will. And for the most part, in budget. But as we come toward the big spend, the items like the parking lot, the outdoor lighting, and so forth, those are things that are not fully estimatable right now. And, and we have to keep a really watchful eye on. So we're going to be having a meeting, Tina, myself, Jim, the project manager, try and get a better understanding of with what, everything we know now and don't know, what is the projected cost, total projected cost of the project? And, and then that'll help guide. But I would say as a general rule, there really haven't been, that I can think of, there haven't been any frivolous or extra expenses incurred. We haven't made, like, spent, we didn't spend a lot more on certain things thinking that we had a pad to work with. So all along, we've been pretty conservative and pretty stringent on expenditures. And that all helps, but there's going to be a lot of, there's going to have to be a lot we look at very carefully. We used to come down the last six months of the project. And that, of course, is tied to another matter on it, which is fundraising. So with the fundraising, if we just, again, to simplify, think of large donors and sort of normal donors, if you will. We really haven't tapped the small donor pool, and the large donor pool has probably been largely addressed, although there still could be outstanding. There's still to be some relates, but I can't, and I don't know that anyone can put a number on what we estimate. We will get in addition, so I can't say fifty thousand, a hundred thousand, or two hundred. Can't say that really, with, I think, a great deal of confidence, so a number wouldn't be, I don't think, terribly relevant. But, you know, there's some, so, you know, there's something, there's more to come. We also have things like, we've applied for a couple of different grants for sports equipment, which promised to, I think, net as somewhere in the range, and correct me, of about thirty five, forty thousand, if they all land. But we won't know one of them until August, pretty close to the opening, and another one, we're still not going to know for a while. We were able successfully, we had some smaller, but still meaningful, every dollar counts. We got one from the King Tire, you know. Yeah, that was, you know, under five, but still, it all helps and all contributes to the larger pot. So the things that, the large, the big rocks, if you will, fundraising, we've sort of reignited, and I think we have both Tina and Michelle working with Councilor Patterson and others on a committee to sort of go down the home stretch with fire flow, talked about earlier. It's, just so it's clear, council and all others listening, getting the fire pump is the sort of gating issue, and we have to get that in order to open the arena. We not have to have a second water line installed to open the area. That could be a twenty twenty five project that we get done. So those are not tied together, but we do have to get the fire pump installed to, before we open. And there's going to have to be in that last month, like I say, for mid or early September, till the time we plan to open, there'll be a Fire Marshal inspection, standard thing, rebuilding inspection, those sorts of things, in addition to the commissioning work I mentioned earlier. So there's a whole series of things which need to take place, and it'd be from the early part, probably of September, to when we open ultimately in twenty twenty five, or sorry, in then October, and then six weeks later.
There, you know, you indicate that about thirty day window exists from the time systems are checked and so forth. Is there the capability of having pre-inspection inspections, so that if, for example, with the electrical, they say, you know, everything is great up to this point, so when I come back in the fall, I'm just going to be looking at this?
Yeah, yes. So while I, I'm not prepared this evening, sort of, maybe at, well, and what can be done before, what can be done earlier, what we think can be done earlier, and what can be done parallel, like, they'll be finishing work probably in a half cent. And I'll send that sort taking place while we test the refrigeration system and so forth. So it'll be overlap, there'll be some things in the order, some things go later. But for the most part, the big systems need to be installed and ready for testing by early September. And these gives you times or adequately, I didn't mention training the staff so we know how to operate this new systems and all those sort of things. So it'll be a busy period. And actually, I was going to share a bit of an internal list, I don't want to, where it's committed the whole, just to show kind of the set of tasks that we have. There's, it's a very long list, so I don't want to go over each and every one. But that, we've had our first meeting internally, and we sort of tagged members of the staff to sort of look after each of those. Finishing work is very close. That's one thing that right here, and the mayor and Councilor Smith have met with Sarah Casey, designer. I'd say one or two decisions, like, literally, tell it white paint, that shade white paint need to be finalized. So is everything with the project, you know, you, you make the decision of what paint colors, then you order the paint, and you line up the contractors, and you do the work. So it's a waterfall or a series that has to start. So we are at a point now where that needs to happen, that, that decision needs to get made. So the ordering may take place, and the contractors may line up and so forth. And I think Councilor Mike Walton and others have notified the construction committee also that this looks like another pretty busy year for contractors in general. There's a lot of work locally that is due to take place, which means we'll be competing with, you know, lots of other big projects for contractors. So the sooner we can line those up and nail them down, the better. We do have also, we have a meeting with the indigenous representatives on April twenty ninth, next Monday. We're coming for a site tour, so we'll address sort of the final, you know, the final decisions we make around recognition of our representation in the, in the arena. And I'll share what I was talking about earlier. Do you know who represents the indigenous community at that? The same, the same representative we've had kind of all along. So Schwaben State Year, Representative Tulpik, and Gordon Gray is coordinating it through.
Why do they have to come back and do anything?
In our integrated bilateral agreement, which integrated bilateral means bilateral between the provincial government and federal government, integrated means a somewhat agreement. One of the required, two of the key requirements, where there was environmental requirements at the outset of the project, which we satisfied. And there's a requirement for indigenous consultation, which continues through the end of the project. So it's a, we, I work with the lady Lisa Heybass, who's our representative for the Regional Development Corporation in Fredrickton. And she regularly, as in every month, checks in to see specifically about what that relationship and what the progress has been on the firm. So that's just the normal part of this project, and always has been from the outset. So, yeah.
Look forward to see, you know, what's, what's put together for that.
Yes, yeah, so they haven't, they've actually not seen this site ever, sort of its current state. We've only seen the rough part of it. So now that there's a building to see, it makes it a lot easier to sort of think about how specifically that representation, you know, what spaces are really the monitoring. So.
It's good.
I'll, 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 Jennifer, in the room. Sorry if this is.
All right, well, we're always looking for that. Some of the consultation will be around some representation within the complex as well. So some of the art pieces and murals and background, and we'll see that'll offset the white color. We're really, we've seen a few panels of also work, it's gonna be beautiful.
So I won't give you too much of the details of these, because it's, it's one of those things that could take longer than it used to. However, I would say that I think we'll need to report on this to council as we go through the next few months. And so without getting, getting into too much detail, this is just a standard task. Those are the things that need to get done to be now in the finishing of the project. That grouped into phases, the first phase being the arena shutdown, which we're very much in now. So worker relocation, which has happened, vacate and re-rein, removing stuff, which is mostly, most all happened with the J and team getting temporary storage for some materials that have to move into trailers. The council privilege, we haven't, we're still waiting to get all the responses to the demolition RFP. When we do, that'll go back to council for approval, you know. And fun park relocation, which has been, and I've, we have agreed to send, to have, to host that rather this year, the Triple C in Bolshing, and the arena demolition itself. Fundraising, I won't blow on, but there are some, they take it, there's small donor plans in the tours, large donor plans in tours, naming rights, fundraising committee update, member update, which is sort of happening, we've kind of reconstituted that, and it's now that you're focused. Um, that you focus, uh, donor wall, um, additionally. Discussing the configuration, and then at some point, there's actual ordering of it. Uh, selling legacy assets, assets, which has already started to happen. And some of the, and it's ongoing. Um, design and construction, these are all things that. Um, probably most people are well familiar with, but the elevator and refrigeration system flooring. Uh, public seating, uh, even in our design meetings, we're still looking at our color of our floor and how to, you know, where the. Um, uh, the donor plaques would be placed and all that sort of thing, indigenous consultation, final artwork, artwork and decoration. Uh, canteen, et cetera. So this is really just naming for the most part, um, the areas, but. Exterior sun installation can be largely resolved, exterior light poles in our construction meeting, we're just discussing whether we'd have sort of concrete. Uh, they'd be in concrete, it'd be freestanding, we decided freestanding, and to this point, uh, building signage inside and out. Um, entrance flooring, you know, it's been a special, if we go with epoxy, it's supposed to be sealed concrete we discussed. Um, just getting the offices and workrooms, uh, right. So. I'd said to John and talked to Jed about it as well, that. There you can go room by room, and you gotta mentally imagine everything that's supposed to be in that room when you open it. So from the desk to the. You know, whatever accoutrements you add to it, um, permanent storage on site, uh, something to consider whether we. Uh, do something to supplement the storage that's there, and interior interior storage shelving boxes. Um, you know, I might add, um, we are very much an interested budget and. So forth, looking, uh, at what we can reuse. We are not just throwing out things, or preferring to order new, or that sort of thing. We are looking to. Uh, reuse and repurpose things that we already have in the current arena. So. Like the desks, I think that probably our recreation people have, the desks we already have. So. We're not, uh, we're being conservative in that regard for council's information. Uh, procurement, um, that's just buying stuff, uh, furniture, office equipment, sports equipment, supplies, canteen, kitchen equipment. On that, for example, we were just finishing today. An RFQ, uh, for canteen equipment that we've got assistance from, from a a local, um, expert. And we'll be putting that out, um. And, uh, paint finishes for our computers, monitors, printers, copiers, scoreboards, et cetera. Those are all things that need to be ordered. Uh, most you'll notice that you see there's, you'll, you might think there's a lot of big, we've ordered most of the big stuff already. So there isn't really much big stuff left to be ordered. It's more of the small stuff that are for the rooms. Uh, services and technology, um. Security, two A, audio, video cameras, network wifi. It is worth noting again for council's information that, um. The budget initially for the network, um, was much lower than, uh, what we ended up needing to spend. Now, part of the answer to that did come up, the construction committee, we already have a network at the town. The system we have has to integrate with that system. It's going to be, you know, integrated to be one system. So the firewall, we have the switches, uh. The APs, which are access points, which are kind of the bulb-like devices you see in this building, which give you local, uh, wifi coverage. There's something like fourteen going in this building, probably because it's a steel building and the construction walls, it has to be distributed pretty extensively. And we're in short, good coverage. So that total bill was substantially higher than what it was probably originally budgeted in in the, uh. In in Brent Kirsten's original budget, but it just, uh. It's one of those things where, again, um, I think that one struck people who saw the numbers as being pretty prime, you see the hardware breakdown, it's standard things, and you consider. Uh, there's also the matter, uh, why didn't we go to, uh, go for it? Well. That equipment has to be integrated, interexistent, and it has to be configured to be. So you would make no sense to have that done by some third party who didn't know our current security and all system we have a. It's much like a lawyer, it's a specialized service where you stay with the company you already have and bring with, which American Cities Rogers and Associates, so. Um, there's that. So power, uh, water and sewer lines, high-speed internet and phone, um, we are. Getting Rogers, uh, Rogers is already is the incumbent provider of our high-speed internet in the rest of the town. You may or may not know at the arena for some time, we've had an old shell DSL line, we've never had a high-speed internet. Actually, it's one of the reasons that the internet is pretty poor, the service is not great there. So. Uh, later this summer, where Rogers will be coming and extending the line from where the end of the town, the Arrows, to the, you know, happy new line. We are hoping, I don't know if Rogers is listening, we're hoping that they cover, they've suggested they cover the cost of this, or at least contribute to it. We're hoping that that stays true. And, uh, the total cost is, I think, was estimated around seventy-five million for that one. So, um. That's gotta happen. And the sound system. Uh, again, for council's information, we got a couple quotes from Signature Sound on the EBITDA at Fredrickton that. Uh, we've worked with on this. Um, one had a much larger speaker array. That really has speakers around the whole perimeter of the walking track, plus the center console. This, the solution we've gone with is really just the center console. Um. Again, in the interest of costs and budget, uh, we've gone with that solution. We still think it'd be a good one. Have moderate equipment, you know, work. Uh, it's a challenging building inherently, because it has so many, uh, plaque services that for Sam.
Generally speaking, what was the difference between the more expanded system and what we've decided to go with?
Uh, for sound, it was about two to one, it was somewhere around fifty to a hundred, fifty thousand versus a hundred thousand. Yeah. Something like that. So the one we ended up was close to fifty. John, can you correct me if I don't forget who you are?
Well, don't forget, I'll leave those with the numbers. Is it comparable to anything else in the town?
So we. I want your question. So we've, uh, actually sent out an RFQ, uh, for the sound system to Rob's point. We do own the spec, so we own the spec for a sound system, and that is for the center cluster ready because it is a cheaper alternative. So we sent out an RFQ, we're waiting on responses back from. Local providers in the valley. And, um, the dead ones fast approach. So once we get better numbers, we can make a decision on that and hold the buck to.
Yeah, so, uh, just to recap a little bit what John said, which is a good note, is that, um, we started by getting a spec from Signature Sound, not getting a quote. To see what requirement they thought the requirements could be. They gave us two sort of alternatives, we can call it bigger and larger, or smaller and a larger solution. And we ended up using the spec for a large solution to go and get quotes from under coming. So. That's where we are. We're still getting those, and we'll effectively make a decision soon. The other thing that, about the sound system, while there is wiring and things you have to. Think about, um, we can always upgrade later, if the budget allowed or down the road. So it's, it's not as fineted or, um. It is not as a permanent decision, and we can always upgrade later. And that's true of a lot of things in the.
Will this limit our ability to hold certain events? Concerts?
I don't believe so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, a lot, a lot of, you know, even the town itself has a, a PA system, which is serviceable.
Need to pursue the legacy. Due to the complexity, again, of, of, and the way it's built, the concrete walls and metal. Using the sound system in the arena, it would suffice for a concert. That's why it'd be similar to something like we had at the barn dance. Where some company would be coming in and doing sound for that event on the arena floor.
So, um, living service technology, fire pump is another one we talked about. Site works is probably where I said we're kind of facing some unknowns, or we have some potential for, uh, overages and and some, uh. Some stress on the, on the budget. The site works is is one area where that's true. So. There are six here, which are kind of like civic addressing and P O box, um, getting that lined up, dumpster area and fencing. Uh, site grading level and cleanup, that's a big item, uh, fencing and ballards, uh, ballards are those steel things that keep you from running into something that you shouldn't run into. And your vehicle's not going very badly. Uh, drainage, uh, drainage system along the ball fields, on what would be, I never remember this, is that the west, that is the west side, I think, of the building. Um, parking lot construction, front facade, flag, exterior signs, which we talked about in the consult, it is no. Notable that, um, in looking at the naming of the naming rights, um. The naming rights here are almost certainly tied pretty closely to what we end up doing in the front, if you just think even of the. The name that's going to appear in the building, that's part of naming rights of now. So we anticipate as we, uh, resolve the naming rates. Uh, decisions and and, uh, move toward an agreement there with. Uh, the company organization holds those, that, uh, there'll probably be extra funding coming forward and around the front facade and flags and stuff. From the start of the building. Um. Landscaping and exterior seating, uh, that's simple, but, you know, usually there's like a bench somewhere outside of the facility like this, so just making those, those are. There's little decisions, but still important ones. Um. If we look at next stages, like operational writing, this is where we get into some of the, um, testing of systems and training. So. Canteen vendor contract, we're, um, looking right now at sort of resolving that, um. And, uh, for the sake of simplicity, and based on the performance of their, our incumbent canteen vendor. Uh, looking at extending that contract for a period of, uh, roughly a year. And it's sort of the easiest path and, uh, that to launch, uh, community room plan, finish room plan. What we, there's a lot of plans here, but we need to. That we figure out how we intend to use those, so what services and programs and activities and events we're gonna host in there. Um, hours of operation, all those things. Uh, the conference room plan has already been changed a bit, and then I don't know if updated, but that will probably be an office room instead of a conference room, is what we're looking at. Uh, but any of that, retrogram and service plans that we're working on, um. Not just for the purpose of this complex, but certainly tied to it. Uh, master operations plan is, is, um. I do have notes over here on the side, but, you know, for the complex, that's where you get into hours of operation, staffing, et cetera. Uh, we do go into health and safety plans, just standard component of any building. Um, kiosk vending and banking, getting vending machines in, that would place the kiosks, what we do for banking. If anything, uh, may not be, uh, but some of it just tie off. Communications plan, uh, we're a communication person, there's, as we near the, um, opening. There'll be all kinds of, um, need to publicize the opening, opening ceremony. Uh, notify the public about what's available, et cetera. So there'll be lots there. Internal sponsors, advertising, promotions, um, figuring out. Uh, what we do with respect to those things, uh, current upcoming events, broadcast system. Um, what that means is that has a fairly elaborate title in a way, but. Um, we're gonna be placing monitors inside the arena, so you you can imagine looking at the set of monitors, and they'll say upcoming events at the arena, and they'll say what's going on now. Maybe that's a live feed from cameras that show the ice surface games going on. So. We were planning on having a bank of probably three monitors in front of the building, one to show the current events, one to show what's coming up. Uh, and maybe a live feed, um, it might be two monitors, so there's still decisions we're working through, we have to figure out. Uh, food licensing, have to get our, uh, food license, um, the building, uh. License for food, um, sign days built is something we do with the designer, make sure we get the. Um, the deliverables from Brent Kirsten, our designer. Um, that's the regional service commission of building inspection, uh, getting that scheduled and signed. Facility ID updates, um, that is all the sort of nitty. The small stuff about, you know, on the website, social media, provincial records, that we used to have one building, now we have another, so you have to. Make some adjustments to sort of your metadata, uh, if you will, about, uh, the identifying information about that building, and just, uh, make it. Uh, the reason to move in, there will be a day when, and it'll be probably Jed's team at the front of the the pack, along with recreation that. Uh, where a bunch of stuff goes out from the trailers, we're putting it in now, back into the new arena. Uh, servicing warranty contracts, um, with all the people, like, think of the refrigeration system, very expensive, million-dollar system. Uh, that we sort of properly, uh, document, understand, and, uh, catalog those. Uh, POS, point of sale, implemented system implementation, what we've decided is because. Of this list and large part and the other things we're working on this year. We're not going to attempt to put in the full act in that system this year, just because the resources aren't there, but we do wanna hit the ground running with the point of sale system. So we're not just exchanging cash as much as we are now, is that we can actually do the normal things that, um. People do when they go and they, um, go into buildings like this and pay for things with credit cards and so forth, or debit codes and. And the like, um, master keys, uh, codes, access protocols. Uh, who's allowed in what room, uh, what are the keys that we have, electronic keys, we have physical keys, what mixture and all those things. Has to be figured out, staff training, systems integration, testing, and the PIs, things from mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. Uh, so, uh, and, uh, and I forget the the eyes for injury, I can't remember. We can have electrical plumbing and other stuff, I'll save for now. Uh, but all the main fundamental operational systems, working systems in the arena have to be. And make sure, uh, they're all, they work with one another, uh, that we understand how to use them, turn them on and off, start them and stop them, et cetera. And, uh, internal inspection, commission, commission is kind of like the term yield gearing in the building, we commission the building. Which is closely tied to city, very, very system, and it's systems, integration testing, but involves, uh. Organizing, uh, making sure that everything is ready, you're good, the fire marshal inspection, which we refer to, ice installation. And then, um, awards, uh, for launch, uh, we'll go to that. Awards and recognition for donors, awards and recognition for contributors. Uh, contributors, the easiest example, given members of the construction community who will volunteer their time. Uh, to help, which is, uh, is many. Uh, grand opening plan, we'll say, is what exactly we'll do, and that's probably not a one day, that's probably a one week or maybe a one month event, but. Anyhow, a series of peak events that we'll schedule and organize. Uh, we, I have in here a fall auction, we planned to do an auction in the, um. Uh, when we closed the barn, but for various reasons, uh, just, uh, didn't feel that we were ready, uh, to do that. And it would make more sense to postpone it and do it as part of, um, the launch, uh, phase. Uh, public opening, um, there will almost certainly be a public opening, the building will be open in public before we have an opening ceremony, which will come after that at some point. So that'll be something when we open it, um. We'll have to have one set of things, a grand opening ceremony, and then as close out, which is the unglamorous part. Uh, of this project, but still all critical things, RDC, that's Regional Development Corporation, we have to have final reports. Uh, we have to have our grant final reports, uh, because with the money we're getting off, it's changing how we spend it and on what and so forth. Insurance adjustments internally, this is where the treasurer is kicking into hot gear and, uh, making sure that. Our insurance policies for the town have been adjusted properly for the contents of the building and the building, uh, jumpstarters are minor. Relatively minor thing with Canadian Tire, just that. Um, as, it's a difficult, though, of a little detail that you have to live with, is that when you agree to that. You actually, uh, you do training at the outset in the back end, you've got to do some things to confirm, you know, what you've done, how you've used the equipment. I think there's even still a training or some other component in the back end as well that we have to look after. Uh, communications plan execution as part of the closeout, that's where we're, you know, we broadcast announcements and so forth to the public and to stakeholders. Uh, interim financing closeout with Bank of Nova Scotia, that all this time we've been. Um, you know, uh, one thing I think we've done, I I don't, I feel very good about is how we've handled. And I should say, for the most part, how our treasurer has handled the interim financing. And being right on time and ahead of schedule that have saved the town, uh, a lot of. Uh, funds because of how quickly we've, uh, the the rapid succession with which we put in claims to get them back, so we don't pay those interest charges. Uh, then we set up the debentures, the sort of unfund part of it, there is a one point seven, roughly million dollar debenture, two debentures that'll get set up. Uh, and the final vendor paying contracts, so the holdbacks all get processed, and you look through that and go with it. So. Uh, I know I did, I ended up going through those more in a linear way than what I maybe I planned to, but I think it's good from information from council to understand. Sort of the set of things that have to be done. So if we, uh, if you at some seem distracted on some other things that have been maybe. That's not setting up the excuse to just say this is genuinely one to be a pretty intense and busy time in the next few months to. Tackle that, but I do think we have a good understanding of what we have to do, it's just a matter of us collectively individually executing, so. That is it.
To be it.
Yeah.
We'll give you a five minute break.
Do I dare ask if there are any questions regarding that?
The only question I asked, if I can remember it, with Troy Life, do we. Know when the individuals that need to be consulted, like the fire marshal, N B Power, are they already involved at this point?
They are, they are, I mean, there has been, um. I don't know how to, if put it, but. The execution and the communication and decision-making has been, um, difficult or challenging, it has not been as smooth as what you would have hoped. But the important in Troy Life has given us the information, but now it's in the hands of our designer to make, line up with our other vendors and the fire marshal. We get those things resolved. And the big item is when we can, when those matters and we're hope. I would hope and expect that those are resolved at some point, either late this week or early next. That we can then say to Troy Life, okay, go ahead and order that.
That's what I was looking for. Sorry, we are from that point.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item twelve two, downtown waterfront revitalization project.
So, um, we have heard back, uh, from, uh, Mi- Michelle here. Our, uh, development, uh, manager has been in very close coordination with RDC, uh, Kola, um, planning group. Oh. I will admit Blair Martin will be in proceedings. Are we set, we're set on, okay. Um. What we have, uh, this, actually. Oh, that is, you know, the owl better than I do. I think the recording will still see the room, but we're. Oh, that is, you, you know the owl better than I do. I think the recording will still see the room, but we're seeing, just, you know. Uh, Blair, who's the guest, um, lest to be, he will not, uh, not that it's a bad thing for Blair to be featured there. Okay, so Blair, we're still in open session, so, so you know, and just making our way through that, so we'll, uh, we'll be a few minutes yet. So you, you're welcome to stay or I can contact you when we are, uh, out of clothes. Cause we usually take about a ten fifteen minute break between the open and closed.
Right, let, let me know. I tried to send you a text message, that did not work, so.
Okay.
Yeah, just, uh, just, I'll, I'll stay here and, and when you're ready, um, I'm gonna start my presentation.
Okay, very good.
Right, good.
So, uh, I guess the long story short of this, and there's a bit of an update to the information and, and Shell is welcome to comment further, but. Um, we've had a revised estimate on the cost of the Glengarry to do their work, which is nine thousand fifty percent of which will be covered. We've asked them to go forward with that, but with one, uh, important change, which is that, um. We would subtract, uh, the splash pad, which we understand the donor, um. The donorship for that is no longer in place, so, um, we've asked them to go forward with the original plan minus that, and that's just happened today. And we're in pursuit of.
Does that include, uh? The layout sketches for the downtown park?
It does. It does. So there are five components, which I would be a little frightened to try on your site, certainly, uh, we will call it the waterfront itself, project boat launch, dock, et cetera. Uh, the pavilion, library, uh, trails and, and one other, which in this case, but maybe that, there's sort of five major components in that. So the only thing that really changed from the plan that council would have seen earlier and had, uh, approved. Is the subtraction again of the splash pad, which is no longer in scope at this time. So we estimated their work will probably take two, three, four weeks, uh, to do the analysis, which will then. Set the table for us to adjust and recently full proposal.
We should have that time for our May communication?
I don't think so, May, prior to June at this point. May will be remains only three to all.
Any question? Okay, we'll move to item thirteen, new business, thirteen one, being municipal woodlot management.
If I could, Your Worship, uh, as a point of information, I intend to bring this forward at our next communication, but, uh. The town owns two pieces of property that could be described as woodlot. One has consistently been described as woodlot. And the other one is the Beck and Wimick portion, so. Um. Within the forestry industry, these woodlots are very valuable assets, they are managed, they are controlled, they are utilized. They're revenue generators. You know, in municipal hands, it could be used for any number of, of purposes, everything from recreation, conservation, woodlot management, et cetera. Um, I'm in the process of communicating with the Calumnatory Wood Producers Association. The association covers woodlot management in our area. Typically, there are a number of grants available to members, we aren't a member yet, my communication with them will include what it's going to take, but basically. Uh, preliminary. We could have. Professional woodlot management plans designed in accordance with what our usage of those properties would be. For about the cost of, of half a fire hundred. And these are, these are vast assets, the largest land holdings that the town has. Uh, and we haven't done anything with regards to the management of these properties since the mid nineties. And Council Britain may want to correct me on my timeframe, but I'm going back at more than three decades, probably. So initially, uh, the purpose of, of our discussions with Calumnatory would be. Uh, to get a better handle on what our assets have, what they can become, what we can use them for. What kind of grants are available, pre-commercial things, civil culture, other areas, um. So that's just an update. Are there any questions on thirteen one?
Um, Deputy Mayor, that is, that would be one of the, um, the top one, uh, would be one of the with last nine hundred twenty nine acres.
Yes.
Property, yeah. And just for the information of council, would you also be considering? Sorry, what is through this? This property as well, which, um.
Yes, off the Rockland Road.
Behind the Phoenix School and, uh.
Oh, that's behind the Kane property. Behind the Who's property?
The Kane, Kane's field, top of the hill.
Is there a third property you would see?
Um, those are the two raid wells.
Okay.
Ones outside the town limits.
That is a lot.
Well, okay, outside the old town limits, pardon me, excuse me. And that always was?
Hmm.
It always was, yeah.
Um, you know, if that was potato ground. That'd be worth several million dollars. Uh, we've got an asset we don't know the value of, we haven't done anything with it in a long, long time. Basically, uh, we want to go forward and determine on how we can enhance that asset.
Just to, just to further that a little bit, if you've walked that piece of property that's on the Wimick. It needs management because it, it's the tree, there's a lot of trees down in it, there's a lot of trees down across the paths that are in it. And it needs to be cleaned up.
Is it both softwood and hardwood? Like I haven't been through there.
Huge, huge pines in there. I mean, there's pines that are a hundred feet high, but it's mostly softwood.
No.
Really hardwood and, um, probably I'd be guessing, but. I'd say twenty five to thirty percent of it's on a side hill that you're not gonna, you're not gonna do anything with. Can't get it?
Moving forward?
Yes.
Thirteen two, um. Your worship, uh, and our C A O and myself were at meetings with the Regional Services Commission in Woodstock recently. And one of the presentations we heard that night was from Horizon about retention and recruitment of medical professions. Once the Horizon representatives had left, uh, Rob's counterpart from Car- Southern Victoria, uh, Dan Deon commented on the fact that. Horizon likes to keep local initiatives busy with busy work and the actual, uh, recruitment and change we've done through the medical society. Not everyone in the room agreed with that approach and some of the communities there expressed that. They were going above and beyond that approach with financial recruitment, rent subsidies. Different sorts of things for professionals they were trying to attract to their community. So Hebrew Hatfield, third from the corner. Um, was featured in a book by George Kennedy and at the time, this is in the turn of the century, the nineteen hundreds. He said, to be a town, Heartland needs, uh, policeman, a lawyer and a newspaper. And Hebrew Hatfield went out and recruited all three. Now, fast forward a hundred and twenty five years, we, we have different needs, but professional services certainly are part of that. And I'm not limiting it to doctors and professionals within the medical field. Legal counsel, accounting, professional services that are growing business community in the area and utilize. Um, needs to be attracted and retained in our community. I don't have any idea what that approach will look like. But like so many things that this council has addressed, we've established a reserve for that. Now, if we had a chance to get an optometrist and a dentist and a occupational therapist operating in our town. If we could subsidize their rent, it would be great to say we already have a reserve for that as opposed to gee, that's not in the budget. Um, so again, on a point of information going forward, I'd like to establish a committee of counselors. To determine if that is something that we would like or is worthy of establishing reserves and seeing how that would go forward. That's really all I have on that.
Just to further on, on the medical side of that, Woodstock is losing another doctor in July and they're not, there's no replacement.
In the valley, and I'm saying from Perth and over to Woodstock. We will lose six family practitioners this year, including two lockers that have already gone. So, yeah.
Okay. Thank you for that. And item thirteen three was the item that was asked for this evening. In regard to forgiving some water and sewer.
So. It's my understanding, and I could be out of date on these numbers. But we've received several calls, uh, of people inquiring about their ability to pay their water and sewer bill. At least three individuals, at least one of those individuals has called multiple times. Staff has been very professional, uh, talked to them about the monthly payments and, and other options. In some cases, uh, the financial hardship is such. That they're going to have a very difficult time and probably do without in other key areas of their lifestyle. To meet the obligation of paying the water and sewer. And I know that last year, and I'm assuming that has continued forward to this year. This has been addressed on a case by case basis. My feeling is that financial hardship is a reality in our life and in our community. And that we should develop a policy as a municipality on how we were going to go forward. Uh, on this, if there's going to be a level of forgiveness, what is it and how do we reach it and what are the criteria and that sort of thing? So I was going to ask, uh. Council's thoughts on directing our administration to come up with some options that we could entertain at a future council meeting? So that we would at least have a draft, uh, to go forward with.
Are you aware if other municipalities have this?
I know the city of Fredericton does, uh.
It's, uh, it did.
Uh, may I ask what the average, I will, I've never paid it, so I don't know what the average water and sewer bill, like I know there's different, but what would the average be?
A hundred ninety five dollars.
For a family or just for a resident?
A hundred ninety five dollars for a whole guy.
Industry pays a different rate. For the act, for the hall, but six, six hundred ninety five. Am I correct?
You are.
Apartments are a little different. And industry is different, but for, uh, two hundred and seventy households in the town of Heartland, the rate's six hundred and ninety five dollars. Up from six twenty last year.
Do you have, do you have any kind of a number as to how many households are suffering?
No, I don't. I guess the other ones.
Apparently we have, uh, thirteen people that are on our monthly payment list. Uh, and we have, um. Normally we don't have any problems, but they'll, you'll have one or two times a year where they'll miss a payment. Uh, but those, and, uh, the people that have called are on this monthly payment list. And they definitely have shown that. Uh, when you're talking to them, you can tell they are definitely trying to do whatever they can to make it all come together.
But just keeping that in mind, and I'll just state, state this in regards to somebody that's outside the town. Which I deal with on a. Very, well, right now, I have six septic systems that are being put in, not their choice. But they have had them put in. And they probably don't feel any different about that when they're paying anywhere from twelve to twenty thousand to have a septic system installed outside of. Of the town limits that we have with the water and sewer. So when people speak of six hundred and ninety five dollars, I find that's a gift. Predator, in my eyes, because of the cost of what could be if they were outside and depending on. Uh, septic systems and wells and ongoing the list. So we have to be very careful on how we consider what we're doing in this area because it could come back to be, be very. Negative in some people's eyes. And that could be negative in, in, even in the eyes of some of the people that are paying the six hundred ninety five dollars. So we want them.
But what is the alternative, just to ask, what is the alternative for these people to try to pay bills that they can't pay? Like, the only other choice we have that we have taken, um, is you put a sign out on their lawn that says, we're shutting off your water.
But that's no different than probably three, uh, no, four or the sixth that I'm using name, but, uh. Doesn't really have any choice when it comes to me telling them that the system is just a boat that costs them sixteen thousand dollars. And they can't do anything different about it other than arrange payments over the next ten to twenty years to pay for a system that's outside. So again, six hundred ninety five versus some of the. Uh, the pressures that people are receiving outside was still a pretty good gift.
We still can't minimize though that, we can't forget that the cost of living has skyrocketed. And the wages have not really met that demand. There are people that six hundred ninety five dollars is the difference between heating their house. Or buying groceries, so.
prescriptions.
Or it's, it's, no, it's not an easy world to live in right now, no matter where, if it's in town or out of town.
It never was an easy world to live.
No, but it's becoming harder and harder with the price of things.
Out, outside of town, people have the option of applying for emergency grants when we have some. Again, they have to go.
The criteria.
Financial hardship, or some love, love to qualify for those, but it is an option. I mean, internally, we don't have that same option.
I, I like the idea of what you brought forward, that's a fair grade and, and setting down to. Process some criteria around it for sure. I mean, even we mentioned jumpstart that we apply for, for a grant, well, you, when you apply for jumpstart as a. Family or as a student, um, it's fairly invasive in terms of what they ask for, about your financial records and so on and so forth. Um, to qualify for one of those grants, even as a student athlete. Uh, so that, you know, you think about those things, there are some processes, I guess, that could be in place and would be worth looking at for those that, that do find it exceptionally hard. I mean, there could be a number of people that have become recently unemployed and so on, uh, to me, you know, so I do think we, we could take, I'd like to take a look at it and see what we could.
So what we're asking is for council to give direction for our administration. To take a look at this and come up with suggested policies and criteria.
It's tough because I agree with like, people will take advantage.
Well, if we have the right criteria and the right safeguard.
There has to be other downsides.
Absolutely.
Who's going to determine whether it, there's a hardship or not.
Right, it's the boss that looks like.
Has been said a few times, yeah, um, I think the staff and the mayor, sir. We look at what other mismanagement we're doing, what they have the policies we'll consult with as we deal with bylaw amendments and so forth. We'll see what, you know, uh, look, uh, very, very, and look at what other policies exist, what criteria and we're information back to council. So I, I, I see no issue with, um, doing that research and coming back with, uh, information.
The direction is a little more than I've mentioned though.
I, I get that it to be well done, the proposal, there are set of alternatives, yeah.
I, I do think that it's certainly worthwhile, uh, venture and discussion. I do think like Council, I will, but, you know, there's a lot to be considered because Heartland is larger than what we have dealt with before. So I think in fairness to all residents, we have to look at it carefully. And the criteria would have to be really, really specific and very stringent.
Smoking two packs of cigarettes today.
I think that, but certainly worthwhile looking into, so thank you for bringing that to our attention. Sheep that very much. Anyway, um, we have no consent evidence. So item fifteen is the date of our next meeting, so our regular council is May fourteenth at six thirty. And our council of the whole will be May twenty eighth at six thirty. And our council of the whole will be May 28th at 6:30.
What was she doing, Jen?
Second.
We've been seconded to within all those in favor.
Just the information of Blair, we're going to keep this open, we don't have any other 10 minutes of process that you're locked in. But I'll put it on the info, we're zooming, Blair will probably do that 10 minutes coming back.
Okay, I'm here.